Very so right. Get that going and well, what let's uh let's get the pledge folks.
Take a kneepads out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now with that, I will call the Ameriscott Select Board to order for March nineteenth. We're gonna start out with we have some budget stuff to get cleaned up here and we got through all the all the scary stuff and the sets coming I thought you'd be here. Missed all the excitement was that? And I think yeah, we have capital and and revenue to to get through so. They want to start off anywhere? What do you want to do? Anyone start off into capital and? Yeah, yeah, so is that fine with everybody? Look at?
Yeah, sure.
Look at capital and?
Whatever.
Yep, zip right through. Yeah, so we've got a yeah, we can just go through. The overlay, where is it? Page one, that's there. Almost there. All right, so we can just go down through if there's any thoughts or adjustments or anything, folks, so. We have a municipal building at at forty, we may have any differences, thoughts, anything? Yep. All right, I'll um I'll move forty thousand.
But he already said why we cut it.
No, that's the that's the department versus the manager.
Right, we're yeah, we've already gone through these, so we're just I'm just I'm we're just looking at the manager's request at this point where Andy's suggested, so yeah, so these are the numbers which we can we go through one at a time, nobody has any issues with them, but I'll make a motion to approve forty thousand for capital for municipal building. Andrew seconded, oh, I thought, yeah, I think Andrew got you Dan, so yeah, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Get that one through, so forty, all right, fire station. Sixty thousand, I'll move sixty thousand for the fire station.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor? All right, Josh, she's gotten abstained.
Yeah.
I guessed that one. All right, highway, this is always a big one. We've got a hundred thousand dollars proposed there.
This is the facilities, the the building.
Yeah, highway facilities, yeah, yeah, this is where the
This is up fifty thousand from us.
Yeah.
Here.
Because we have work to do.
Right, yeah.
The big one there is the salt shed.
Salt sheds.
Engineer report came back saying you got three years, you should replace this. The insurance company is expecting us to do that. And so the question then becomes, do you want to try and get as close as you can to be able to pay for it outright, or do you want to run, you know, not run the risk, but the reality is you're gonna have to bond it, it's very low chance that we'll get funding for it.
Yeah, it's one of those ones there, we're hit, yeah.
Okay.
Fortunately, so, all right. Nobody got it, I'll move it, I'll move a hundred thousand for highway facilities.
A second.
Andrea, any more discussion?
That's
All those in favor? All right, very long. We have to move the the ones that even are funded, right, because they're on the warrant. I'm trying to remember when we don't have
They'll be on there are the ones for appropriations, so if they're
If if there's a zero
It won't be on.
There's zero requests, yeah, I'm trying to remember, I think one year we were moving, yeah.
Moving zero requests.
We yeah, we move, we we did it in the past, like we moved a zero request for something which was weird, so yeah, so we can skip those, all right, fire truck, that's that's one that I yeah, another big one there, I'll move one fifty for for the fire truck.
Second.
Thank you, Tom, any discussion?
Have we talked about the the timing of ordering that thing? I know we
Yeah.
It was unclear to me when when we're gonna do that.
It's after I
Don't we need four years out, three years, something like that?
Yeah, well, well, then wouldn't it make sense? I don't know, I'm so worried, well, what about steel tariffs?
Exactly.
Did you do it sooner?
Fire chief was hoping to be able to put an order in this summer.
Right.
And so the town meeting warrant article would need to include which go and add the treasurer's warrant to be able to see if we can get bond
Right.
Approval, which doesn't mean we take a bond out right now, the big thing is signing a contract.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the biggest caveat or unknown that we're aware of is at the moment is gonna be that engine replacement. They told him at the time, if it takes, say, three years to get here and the engine, the new engine's available, it has to go in from an emission, I think it was emissions standards that have to be met.
Okay.
Um, if it becomes delivered before the new engine is available, then the price is pretty close to what it I don't know what it will have in the contract for riders for steel and other
Yeah.
Things.
That's probably
But he was hoping to get approval to sign a contract for purchase sooner rather than later.
And that's a separate
It's gonna take, it's gonna take what, three to four years?
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I think The money down and we still be putting into that fund to pay.
The thing is, can we lock in the price?
Uh, to an extent.
To an extent.
Yeah, but they'll they'll have
There's a lot of variables.
Yeah.
So dealing stuff goes up, the cost's gonna go up.
And there'll be build variations too, when they go into it, there's sometimes there's change orders, just like a regular contract where that doesn't fit or we can't do this or stuff, so yeah, so there's some unknowns there, but unfortunately, yeah, right now the like there were some stock trucks in play, but you would we'd have to have like pay for them now, you know, at one point six or one point seven million, and it's just the timing's not great to get savings now, so we're gonna be stuck with a higher cost, but it's
And you're gonna make sure you, if you do do a stock truck, that all your equipment, you know, you gotta figure out your needs or your space of your compartments and
Right.
Make sure everything that you currently have and
Yeah.
Potentially maybe down the road, you want a little extra space, but if a stock truck doesn't work for what you you already have on your truck now, there's no sense to go behind, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're essentially by doing this and having the warrant article, we're committed to buying it, essentially signing a contract this year then.
That's what the chief's hoping to do.
Yeah, and some of them, if you put a certain percentage down, you know, when you sign your contract, you get
Yeah.
More money off.
Yeah, they'd expect, I think, fifty percent upfront.
Right.
About this at fifty percent.
It was different, it was different variations before.
And then they'll start working on
Five in there now or so.
Long, I think the chief's hope is that as long as we don't need to bond anything now, we can delay that until it comes closer to making that payment, which if we order now and it takes three years, you probably four years before you have to make a debt payment, so. I don't unless you want to play the game of interest in trying to make the the bond principal work for you, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be about a hundred thousand dollars short of an anticipated payment, and so we're that's part of what we're hoping is that
Yeah.
It'll come closer to lining up with the increase so that we can just shift that burden over to debt service from here at that time.
Totally, so awesome, any more discussion? Yeah, all those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Josh, you can abstain, yeah. All right, my lines here, fire equipment, we've got six thousand. I'll move six thousand for fire equipment.
No second.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion on that? Yeah, all those in favor? Josh, you abstain. If it says fire on it, we get through, so.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, police vehicle, my eyes, I'm trying to follow these lines here, they're getting Forty thousand on police vehicle, I'll move forty thousand for the police vehicle capital.
Second.
Tom, seconds, thank you, any discussion?
Why do we need that? No, never mind.
Uh, they just like anything, they all it was like a fire truck, it needs to be replaced.
You know. The rotation of what we've had. And then if you and then if you don't keep that rotation, you might as well go back through and increase your line item for repairs.
Repair.
Yeah, we're trying to with what I'm trying to present is to get us to a point, although it's another big increase on the capital that in two, I think it's two years, it does project to kind of level off, and so it could be a more stable numbers, this is your biggest arguably your biggest, should be your biggest piece of your expense if you overall the budget, if you look at your debt and your capital and try and stabilize those, and a lot of the stuff we can anticipate. And, you know, the we just bought a truck this year.
And now?
All equipped was about seventy grand.
Hmm.
And so with that purchase, it brings the balance down a bit and in trying to think in two years' time, there'll be another purchase most likely if you stay on that schedule that we presented. And so I was just trying to make sure that the cash is available to be able to do that unless we want to bond or run the risk of having these spikes and fluctuations.
I mean, and you may, you may see, it may not happen, but you can next year, you can see what the current prices are and adjust what you want to put in your capital reserve based on what the price.
Right. You gotta get it, get up and level it off, so some of these reserves have been underfunded in the past, so. Puts us behind a little bit.
Yes.
Um, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I think
I voted.
You voted, okay, yeah. All right. And there. All right, the highway truck is same same situation there with the highway truck.
And Andy, you took out the extra truck, no?
No, that one, so that one, if you want to look at that full pullout sheet there, and for that one, that one is a good example where that list matters and whether or not the board or the committee are have an agreement, so that number would afford us you know, with the following years, as I presented as an estimated appropriation, would afford the purchase of a second truck.
Um, right.
Unless the department expands, we don't need to plan for a second truck yet. That's kind of the question in of the board is, you know, do you see and want to expand in the future? And if so, then it's a matter of setting it up so the money will be available. And this isn't for a full blown take over winter plowing proposal, that would be a few more trucks and a lot more money, but um, it's more of a conversation point for you all to say, do we want to fund the additional money there or do I pull it back a little bit?
Well, isn't there a broader discussion around public works, though?
Mm hmm.
That needs to take place?
It's in the works.
Yeah. So how to, without going into detail, how would that impact this, you think? Or is it two?
Well, I mean, that's gonna range the gamut, Kevin and I are working together to come up with a process for the two boards to work through, should should there, you know, entertain, you know, what a joint department would look like. Um, additionally, like we should be talking about, well, if it's not that, you know, to what extent might we grow? Um, do you want to take on plowing in the future? Do you want to keep it and just build in a working road commissioner to the staff you already have, and then you've got a safer works work crew to go out and do projects with three versus two? And so I think that all needs to be worked on, I think our goal right now is looking for a consultant, we've got someone that we'd like to work with with the boards um, and work through that process between April and December.
Mm hmm.
Um, and then that would inform next budget year and planning cycle, if there needs to be a bond consideration or whatever, depending on which way it all goes. And so that's one there that is, it's, you know, trying to fund for an additional truck, you see in the estimated cost there, it shows a lot more money than the dump truck, that's because in the in that timeframe, I've I've laid out the possibility of its replacement also in that ten year period, which might be a little
With one
Aggressive on a on a truck like that, maybe not, but again, it's more for conversation if you would
Mm hmm.
Know how you feel about trying to fund that now without knowing, or do you want to kind of wait on some of that?
Didn't we say that the you guys, between the two of you, don't have a location for a combined place?
Um, well, not identified yet.
Yeah.
And even if, the other thing too, like Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we did have a joint public works, the equipment was we had a, I can't remember.
We were out here, we were out on the heater.
It was here.
Yeah.
Um, but the equipment, was the equipment shared or was it?
Yes, it was.
They're shared with Newcastle?
Yes.
Okay.
One town owned some, one town owned some other stuff.
That's what I mean, so you said a situation where you still have equipment to buy or purchase, you know, you still have expenditures there. Yeah.
But to some extent, right. Thirty five thousand, if you go ahead and combine, you're still gonna use, you're gonna need some money to do that.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Well, you'll need a lot more.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I guess
But that's why I would support thirty five thousand for that reason.
I guess I'm moving thirty five.
I would, yeah. Josh, Josh, okay, Josh made a motion for thirty five.
Second.
Uh, Andrew's gonna second, any more discussion? Any who's in favor? All right, well, that along, yeah. All right, same thing with highway equipment at thirty. Anything jumping out there to anybody?
No, I think we talked about
Yeah, we've gone through all the investments and stuff, I'll move thirty for the highway equipment.
Second.
Thank you, Tom, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All right, hey. Yeah. Sidewalk at seventy.
I'll move sidewalk at seventy.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Tom, thanks, Josh. All right, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All right, we get there, do do do, and oh, God, that paving one always goes up, doesn't it? Yeah.
I bet it went down.
Yeah, I know, it's always high, though, it's always a high number, so. All right, I'll move one hundred and fifty thousand capital for for paving.
Second.
Thank you, Andrea, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All right, I'm gonna skip right over those zeros. Now we're getting getting cheap down here now, going down to the cemetery reserve, right?
I'll move, I'll move the twenty thousand.
All right, they're just gonna move twenty. Dan's gonna second that one, all right, I saw your hand moving, I was gonna let you have it.
It's just a twitch, yes.
I'm watching. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, good there, there there, there, then we go. We're almost, we're almost done with capital, though, yeah, all right.
This is not the first time we've been
Yeah. Property reval at thirty, I'll move the thirty on.
I'll second the thirty.
Thank you, Josh, all those in, any discussion, all those in favor? Okay, we've been over a lot of these numbers already, so
We have.
Yeah, and then the payroll liability at twenty, I'll move that one.
Maybe one of us can
I'll second it.
Josh, you going a second? Any discussion, all those in favor? Okay. So that is, we didn't miss any, right?
No.
Ready, check, we're good. All right, am I good, Andy?
Think so.
Yeah.
Revenue.
All right. Revenue. Right, whoops, someone wanted me to take all the papers there. Here we go. I got myself all disco populated over here. All right.
No, no, no. I can't remember, it's a bit, we go all over the place.
Yeah, I think we just started right from the beginning, right, we didn't have an overview of revenue.
We do. You do, where is it, Andy?
Um, right before the capital. Oh, it is, okay.
Page seventy one, thanks.
Page seventy one?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the second page seventy one, yeah, right before.
Last seventy.
There it is, yeah, I couldn't find that earlier, I knew it was in there somewhere. Yeah, it's it's second page seventy one. In before before capital.
Oh, back
Yeah, go back on your other, the other side of your yellow divider there. Yeah.
Well, yeah, so those numbers under the object column, where it says, you know, ten or one or nine, those are all numbers used to correspond to the the numbers for the departments that it's in, so ten is public works, one is admin, so if you go back through the budget books and look at the bottom of the
Oh, yeah.
Summaries, I'll get to those departments, you will see some of the revenue there, I just put it back into a summary that comes out of Trio.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Put them all in one spot.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I don't know what U F B is, could you explain that?
That's the undesigned fund balance.
Okay. And?
That's what you think, that's what he's recommending to take out of
The what, that's like the surplus the town has, so
Oh, all right.
The recommendation of the order is just to have a minimum of three months of expenditures available in that.
Okay.
So
All right.
The same thing.
Um, all right. So we're looking at
Building permit fees might be a little high, do you think there're gonna be a lot of building this year?
Wow, you've got, you've got the
Um, why don't we start, just so we're not bouncing around, folks, let's start right at the top and work our, just work through the line items and we can, yeah, get on them, so um, the excise tax, that's, yeah, it's always a
So so the actual in twenty twenty four was five twenty, and you're going down to five fifteen. I would have thought you would have gone up maybe to five twenty five.
The, I mean, it's one of those, you know, with a lot of these, they're they're not guaranteed.
Sometimes you try to keep it low.
And so, I mean, to go from five twenty to assume what, five twenty two, five twenty five, I mean, that's the part we don't know, I mean, you buy a new vehicle, next year, it's it's excise taxes almost half.
Yeah.
And so it's a matter of how well do we think the the car market's gonna perform, which will depend on how well the economy's performing, and it's kind of a tough one to feel like we can
Oh, no, I know.
For certain.
No, I know.
But I
I wouldn't put it any higher.
Five sixteen, five twenty.
Mm hmm.
And so I don't know why you just don't keep it at minimum five twenty.
I don't typically try to try to err on the side of conservative number, just
No, but I, I mean, lower, no, I understand that, but
But this year is gonna be a weird year.
Mine. Okay.
I would
It's fine, I'm just
No, it's a, this is my question, yeah.
I'm just, no, I'm, I took my charge seriously to
Yeah.
Yeah, finding lower expenses and find revenue.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be nice to think
But a lot of the, yeah, all the revenue we don't have control over, you know, because we because we can't up the excise tax and
No.
Which we
No, 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 it's just a function of history and whatever it is.
Expect a little less maybe and then be over on it.
Yeah, in the larger scheme of things, five thousand's not gonna matter, so.
Yeah, okay, I'll move the five fifteen for auto excise tax.
Second.
We don't have to go through all of them, do we?
What's that?
Yes.
We don't, we don't go through all of them. I've never gone through
We don't, no, I guess we don't have to, I mean, if if there's no changes.
You can, if
That's what I was thinking too.
I, I mean, if there's no changes, all you have to do is move the
You've already got it appropriate, right?
Projected fiscal year twenty twenty six revenues.
Is that, I said, we don't have to, do we go through each line item?
Um, the ones that are separate are the L wrap is a separate article, the fund balance is a separate article. The, all the rest of the revenues, for the most part, that are on here, the ones that are bolded towards the bottom, those ones um, homestead, Betty and revenue sharing, the state tells us what those are.
Yeah.
Or the or the calculation, when you do your commitment, tells you what it is, and so you don't pick that number. And I put it in there just to try and give you a sense, so I mean, that number from taxation is not Just to try and give you a sense. So I mean, that number from taxation is not locked in until we do the commitment. And those numbers, when they do the spring work, more homesteads, less homesteads, more value, less, so I mean, some of that just requires that commitment form to be done, so. That's those, the fund balance is separate, and then everything else kind of gets grouped under, we explain admin versus planning, but then it's an ultimate. Like your general government.
Well, so everything right, on this list right now, everything but the, uh, UFB or zero one five hundred. Well, those could be moved all at once, if there was no.
Right, let me ask, um, let me just go to the couple of things I have really questions on. So the interest on accounts, we're gonna, there's fifty thousand, is that what we actually agreed to? Given.
I don't think the, no, there hasn't been a motion yet, um.
Cause we had a long discussion about that.
So I'll, I'll. I made a motion, didn't I?
Yes.
But did anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Oh, Andrew's second it, right, so we gotta kill that motion first.
You kill it?
So, so we'll, we'll just vote it down. Any discussion, all those in favor of my motion?
Don't vote for it.
All those opposed? All right. Yeah, so we gotta get that out of the way.
Yeah, so as far as, as far as the revenue as. As we go down. So, we'll talk about. The fund balance number if we wanna take more out of it. And what is the current? Somewhat close to date.
I don't have that. I mean, we're, we're still waiting for an FY twenty-three audit to be finished.
Yeah.
Um, FY twenty-four hasn't started yet because I'm not gonna do that till twenty-three's done. Um, they just got the schools audit a couple of weeks ago.
Hmm, you've got the schools on it?
Part of it at least.
Wow, that's amazing. That's a feat in itself.
Complete, full vote for all, all aspects of it, um. I wanna say it's like around one point four, um, without accounting for this year's estimated ending balance. Which is running pretty close to not wanting, I mean, you're.
Well.
Pretty close to, or you should keep it probably.
Right. But, I guess. I don't know. I'd, I'd kind of like to keep it at one fifty, but it would be nice.
So I'll just share, the way I came to that number, and it, in. I don't explain it well through the different departments, um, but when I showed the offsetting revenue, I, I try to look at fund balance and I'm making a recommendation based on. Um, one or two years short-term expenditures that we're not gonna see as recurring. Um, versus how the town's been using its fund balance is like a steady revenue source. Um, it concerns me because someday you might not have that, and then you're looking at a potentially a seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollar shift in. What was a, seen as recurring revenue, that's not a. Always a great place in my mind to kind of use it as that practice, um, doesn't mean you don't, it just, that's. How I've tended to try and approach, that's, that's, that's what my number reflects, is just those kind of, where I would suggest some of the offsets, like. Police, for example, the overtime expenses related to someone who's coming to go to the academy, we're not gonna hopefully see that every year. Um, so that would be like, well, that's an increase for this year for that particular purpose, and so that would be to me an offset from fund balance. Um, the website, purchased, the purchase of the new website at fifteen grand, that's a three-year expense that we hopefully won't see again for a while.
Right.
Um, so using fund balance to cover that, that portion, so those, that's how I tended to apply it through there, and that's, that's. Just what that reflects is on.
So, yeah, I. I get that. And, but I would just like to see if it's the people's money, that some of the money comes back. How little it may be. Um, seeing as some of these increases did come. Um, so, at least if we can give them back some, I think we're still. In a good spot. So, that's just my opinion. Um, as far as the business, business licensing fees of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, what is the timetable that, um. This business license, and is this going to be an ordinance that needs to be voted on, or is this going to be something that the board can just implement?
No, we said we're gonna put the ordinance on the town.
So I've, I've applied, I've applied for an intern, I don't know if we'll.
Working, it's gonna be a little bit, right, yeah.
Haven't heard if we'll get the intern yet. Um, this was through the Margaret Chase Smith Policy Center. Um, it's a summer intern twelve-week program, and my thought was if we can get that, um, then that would. The, the responsibility to help do the legwork to help us set up, um, what an ordinance would look like. Um, and then that would set it up for a vote by December, and then that would give you the chance to raise the fees. It's in the second half of.
Hey, so if we went with a hundred dollars, this would be half a year, which would be effective in December, a hundred dollars times three hundred businesses. So that fifteen thousand would be right on to a hundred.
Well, I, I just have a hard time putting fifteen thousand dollars in without being approved by the town.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, cause we don't, it, it. So if you don't, so you don't have to account for it.
You don't, you don't even have the ordinance written or in place, you don't have, you have a timetable, but that's it, so I don't see how you can. It may not pass, so I don't think you should put the fifteen thousand dollars in until it passes. So you can't earmark something that you don't already have in place.
Not, yeah, not account for revenue, okay, so you're saying that, yeah.
Just on the side, it's not related directly, but I was looking at Rockland's stuff, and one of the reasons they license new businesses is. Is so they have emergency contacts for fire and food contact.
Oh, sure, sure.
So what do you, what else you gonna get? If I register my business, what am I gonna get for a hundred dollars a year?
The right to operate your business in.
So if I ran a place in Newcastle or Noble Barrel, then I.
For the sake of the, the budget and revenue right now, it's just a larger discussion that there's a lot of facets to it, um. I, I understand what Josh's saying, cause if, if he don't, if it doesn't go through, do we wanna, is it?
Cause, cause you're not.
You wanna not account for it? Um, that's, that's the question, right?
Right.
Uh, I mean, cause you, you're not accounting, Dan asked about why not bumping up excise tax to five twenty-five, but then you say, well, we can't. Do that, but now we don't have anything in place. So how can you put the fifteen in there?
This, this was to force a conversation.
Yeah, this.
So, so the, 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 the other side of that is, if we don't account for it, and it does go through, and that money is there.
Right, then you're.
It goes to your fund balance.
It's just another, no harm, no foul, then.
Right, it's no, it's no, it's just another revenue stream that comes in after the fact, just like you get a grant or something.
Same way, the revenue like be conservative on, just because you don't know.
What's nice about it, from that perspective, if something does go into place, you do collect the revenues, it goes to the fund balance, then next year. You'll have a better sense of actually what you raised that you can put towards next year's budget.
Okay.
Versus how we're treating fund balance now, I think at least you know, you would have a better chance of knowing the number.
Yeah.
Say, hey, we raised thirty grand from this, we're gonna apply that to next year, so some places can do that with. Tree growth reimbursements, like they, they were able to get to a point where they were off a year, where the, the, the money comes in the previous year, they just use previous year's number. To say, we, we're knowing exactly how much, but we're guessing on tree growth reimbursements on this. All of these revenues are, are guesses and assumptions.
Yeah.
So if there's any of those that you have that chance to kind of give yourself that year to know exactly what came in, and apply that. Kind of take some of that, that out of there.
So I guess another question on revenue was. Where, where's money, I guess I haven't really looked at the, at lines. But TIF money. Where, what's coming back to the town from the TIF to cover some of the expenses?
That's one of those ones that's on your tax commitment form, it's a, you know, it sits up at the top of the page, like with your county and your school, it's just a. A separate fund that gets funded based on the mill rate, so it's X amount of value times the selected mill rate, so you don't know what the revenue on that is until the mill rate's selected. Um, and then it has to live in its own fund to fund those projects, and the, the board acts as the trustees of that. Um, so it's not like a town meeting vote. To my knowledge, to spend the money. Um, if, the programs define, you trust, you're the, uh, trustees of that, of that account.
Runs itself, yeah.
And so that would be one there that, if that starts performing the way it's planned, um. You know, it has the possibility of generating two million dollars in revenue over the course of the TIF. To fund that list of projects that were identified, including, you know, ten percent towards the cost of a fire truck. So if it starts working fast.
Well, I, I guess what we need to realize is that the TIF boundaries have changed. And. There's one big commercial area that's in that TIF district that's not gonna come in as your revenue. For your property taxes this year, correct?
Correct.
Hanaford?
Hanafords, most of it will, so it's all the new additional. There will be a small shift in that the, this year's tax commitment captured the investment they put in on the personal property side. That raised their personal property from a million something to just over three million, and so there will be a shift, unfortunately, because of how the timing lined up. Um, otherwise, it's just capturing anything that, you know, so if that, say, was a five million dollar valued property, when we went into the TIF program and was approved. That stays on the.
That will remain at that.
This side of the table, and then if they add a million dollar addition, just that, like Camden National, some of Camden National was built when we started the program. And got approved, and so we were only cap, able to capture, it's a weird calculation, but only to capture the finishing touches of it.
Yeah.
Um. And so, yeah, the majority of what's in there today, or when that got approved. Is supporting the general tax base, um, in, in general fund. With the exception of that personal property, which depreciates, and the, the assessors actually didn't recommend we include the personal property in there. Because it depreciates every year, much different than real estate does, and I said, but it's still.
Still quite.
Still there, yeah.
And they do have, we, there are some things that they can do to. You know, account for, and you know, they don't have to, from my understanding, have to account for the full. Value in the TIF, like on that shift, um, on the personal property piece. So there's some things in their discretion, when your discretion is board, assessors to kind of decide on the back end. That'd be a tax kind of conversation.
Tom, you had a question on something, right? I think we were getting started, and you have something?
Well, I was just gonna say that. I think we all agreed, I'm not sure if, if, uh. We were all here at the time, but I think we all agreed generally, we want to have a business license, whether there's a fee or not, so that we know that. When new businesses come in and we can get their information about emergency contacts.
Yeah.
The fee can be, you know, something we have to argue about.
Yeah, and, and we'd also talked about, um, Airbnb registration or short-term rental registrations as well. Would you imagine that that would be? Do you have a number on that first license registration?
Certainly. Yeah, I think that's just more of a conversation. You wanna kind of suggest it'll be this or that.
But I wanna.
Particularly.
But as far as the utilization of.
Something you can put on the table, I mean.
Cause you can argue that it's a business.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll leave. Yeah. Eight nineteen, five thirty.
We gotta develop an ordinance.
We're taking out the utilization out also?
Yeah, but I would, I think I would include both.
It's a separate motion.
Okay.
At this point.
Sorry, I have a sidebar down here.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so out of the eight nineteen, we're taking out the seventy-four and the fifteen.
So, yeah, so I was just, we're, so we're looking at, if we're moving revenue, um. Including. UFB, the undesigned fund and the fifteen thousand, you have it's eight nineteen, five thirty, right? State stuff separate, right, state reimbursements, but we're, if we gotta move the, um, take the UFB out, so we're gonna move that separate. And it could be a separate number, and then take the fifteen out, right?
Yeah, so I have, um. I got the formula here, right, it'd be seven eighty-nine, nine thirty, less the fund bound, the fund balance is already removed from that. So everything, everything but fund balance in the state. Calculations down below, total revenue is presented as, um, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. The fund balance, as I presented it, was an additional seventy-five thousand, three hundred and ten, for a total of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, two forty.
Where am I seeing that number?
Um, so is the seventy-five from the department recommendation or yours? They're just slightly different.
So, so I get, I guess my department, when we get down there, I'm gonna recommend a hundred and fifty thousand, but we'll see how far that goes. So we're taking the seventy-four, eight-ten off in the fifteen thousand. Out of the eight nineteen, five thirty. And what is that number, Daryl?
You can put it to seventy.
Eighty-nine, five, nine fifty?
Seven eighty-nine, nine fifty.
No, it could be seven twenty-nine.
Seven twenty-nine?
Right, hang on here.
I haven't got to it.
Out of the eight nineteen, right, eight nineteen, five thirty is our starting number, right? As we're at. We're gonna take seventy-four. Eight-ten out. That puts us at seventy, and then we're taking another fifteen. Out of that, that puts us at seventy, seven twenty-nine, seven twenty. Do you wanna check that and just make sure?
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Yeah, all right. And that would move. All that revenue, um, minus the, yeah, basically my C L, I put an undesigned fund balance and the. And the number for the business license, I, yeah. Does you have any? Uh, so, I'm just sorry.
I am, uh, my formula, the way I've calculated, I go back through each of the departments, and I apparently moved one of the numbers in my spreadsheet recently, I was playing with it. So we're, yeah, so we're working off the total.
Fund balance from that eight nineteen, five thirty. It's seven hundred and forty-four, seven twenty.
And then the fifteen.
Then minus the fifteen.
Seven twenty-nine, seven twenty.
Yeah, if we don't count for the revenue for business licensing.
Seven twenty-nine, seven.
Seven twenty-nine, seven twenty, okay.
Yeah.
That's what we, all right.
Twenty-nine?
Seven twenty. So that would be. My, I, yeah, recommend, I'm gonna make a motion to approve that number.
For revenue?
For revenue.
A second.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
But now I'd like to go back and make a. Motion to use an undesigned fund balance to increase that. As the recommend, uh, to a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the undesigned fund balance to take a hundred and fifty thousand out of that to apply that towards. Our revenue.
So, so, so that, so.
Yeah.
So let's think about that.
So, uh, hang on, just say, just we're gonna, Josh made a motion, and then we can. You may, yeah, and we can second, we'll do discussions, I'll, I'll second, so we can get in discussion, so yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, so we don't really know what it's gonna be in the. End of twenty twenty-four, right?
Uh, we will not, like, it's very unlikely we'll have a, uh, audit report from FY twenty-four before we go to town meeting.
So, so, so the, the best case is, is that it'll just be a wash. Worst case is we're basically robbing from.
Well, you're dipping a little further in what would be recommended, yeah. I mean, it still leaves you with a healthy balance.
Very healthy balance.
But it's, you, you're just, we're, we're right about that line where you're at with the auditor recommends to have, so.
Three months.
But it's not like you're gonna have to go get a tax anticipation note. So you're not that dangerous.
But you're looking at it for like a tax offset.
Yeah.
Right.
The people's money, it's the people's money, you give it back to them.
But that's fair, as long as we just know, like, we don't have a policy, some towns have a policy on what the fund balance will be at a minimum. And maybe that's something you might wanna consider doing, so you know what you're working with, and then it's very clear, anything over this can be seen as what Josh is trying to say. I think to, personally, I think my recommendation would be not to try and view it from that perspective without actually knowing what your. Is, we're just going based on what the auditor's recommending, there's no policy on it, um, so it's scary to think that, like, it's their money, they give it back to them if we don't have. Uh, a set policy on what the bottom, what the floor should be.
I think we need to have a set policy.
I, I think we're good for this year.
So the seventy-five, three-ten is their recommendation?
No, that's just, so again, that number reflects only my thoughts on where the offsets I thought should come from, when you go by department. Looking at it from shorter term expenses rather than a recurring revenue source.
So I will, I will say we've done this for. Quite a few years and.
What do we do last?
We're still here.
So, let me just, I'm just looking at, like, actual twenty twenty-three, there was a negative number there, does that mean that we actually had to?
That's just what it's shown in Trio, I gotta, I'd have to go back.
Does that mean that we actually had to, like, fund the fund balance?
No, no, this is not. We do it, so when we do it in Trio, I mean, you're only using the fund balance, I mean, say, say you've gone through your budget and you spent a hundred grand less than. We do it, so when we do it in Trio, I mean, you're only using the fund balance. I mean, say, say you've gone through your budget and you spent a hundred grand less than. What you and what you were authorized to spend and and that means you didn't end up having to use any of your fund balance. So it's just, it has to do with how Trio is reporting it.
Negative positive number.
It's just kind of a weird way to present it, so it doesn't, doesn't read well when you're looking at it from revenue collected through cash receipting, because it's not a cash receipt that you're getting. Um, and I didn't apologize, I didn't go through to try and correct. See, it's just how it came out.
No, but it makes sense because it didn't, like, we didn't use, we, you know, we, if we budgeted for a hundred and fifty and and we didn't. We had a hundred and eighty two.
That period of time that's presented there.
Yeah, yeah. Fifty for quite a while, so.
Probably from twenty two on, I think it's probably been pretty close to one fifty each year.
Yeah, okay. I'll call, yeah, any other discussion on? Undesignated fund balance? Alright, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Okay, although it was opposed. Things get, yeah, two opposed, so motion carries. Alright.
So that's pretty much it, right?
Yeah, I mean, there are some smaller ones on that second page that I was explaining.
The state stuff, state reimbursements.
What I'll do is I'll try and just clean it up in the way of the way that, this is not arranged by the way of the warrant articles, obviously, and so. For the draft warrant, what I might do is unless there's objections to. The items that aren't bolded. Essentially, all of those and thirty two one eighty one, the LRAP, that's its own separate article. And again, those bolded items are just on the tax commitment form, but that would leave. One seventy, one seventy three, and then one eighty one through. The G A reimbursement.
And are we sure we're getting the homestead reimbursement this year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's owed, that's owed to us by law. I mean, there's, there's plenty of proposed legislation right now that may increase. Both the value of the homestead and potentially the amount of reimbursed, but. I don't, those are all still going through legislative session.
Hey, we've talked about um. And I get that, you know, the business license. Fee will have to go through a process and so that's potentially something along with air. A short term rental registration. We had also talked about a um a pilot program. Or at least even if it's a voluntary pilot program. And I know you can't budget for that either, but is that? What would one need to do to do that?
Um, so I, I put zero in for the pilot. I believe.
Yeah, you've got pilot.
Yeah, you had it.
Oh, sorry, plot, I can plot, I can't read today. We don't have anything coming in right now for pilot, yeah. So we can't count on that, but but yeah, that's.
Talked about having mooring fees too.
Well, those are Newcastle's charges, mooring fees by way of the shared ordinance.
To Dan's point on the pilot, yeah, that's, that's uh ongoing discussion.
And I know some of it is like thinking into the future as well, just like trying to plant some seeds for uh. Other revenue sources that. At least in my mind, I can justify.
Yeah, I think it's like the the business licensing, I mean, you make it, take a crack at it and try and form something in the pilot, you'd write the letter and. Send it out and. See what happens and then, you know, it could be what we were talking about earlier, it's like whatever does come in that year, you'll know exactly next year with the offset could be used as.
So I'll start with it and see.
I think this is a fourth time. Pilot for me.
What's that?
Think this is a fourth time on the pilot episode or more.
It's been on the radar since.
We've tried it. Hasn't worked.
Well.
Never know. So we just did our budget, where'd you cut?
We didn't. Get rid of the police department.
And sit here and talk about cutting and here we are, now was the time to cut.
Andy, state reimbursements, remind me, we just went through this, so the only thing on there is the LRAP, right?
LRAP is its own article. The bolded ones are in the tax commitment form. Uh, and then everything else that's on that page would be also included in the warrant article.
So we can move everything on there but the LRAP together, right? Which I think is five oh two fourteen, so let's check my math, right? You're six nine one four minus twenty four five, right? Five oh two five fourteen?
Whatever you came up with, Daryl.
Looks like just get double checked, like I have a second, second opinion.
Uh, there'd be twenty one thousand and seventy five dollars, because again, those bolded items on there are defined, defined when you do the commitment form.
Yeah, 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 sorry, yeah. I was taking everything and taking.
Additional twenty one thousand and seventy five dollars from. What you had passed previously on this seven twenty nine, seven twenty.
What's your number again, sorry?
On the second page there, it's an additional twenty one thousand and seventy five dollars. If you add it to the seven twenty nine, you'd be at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety five.
One more time.
Seven hundred and thirty thousand.
So how do we do that? We already moved the seven twenty nine, seven twenty.
Another motion.
Now we can, we could move this one separate at the twenty one oh seventy five then, right? Yeah.
I think the warrant article, I just, I would combine those essentially and just. Maybe set this page up better next year for based on.
Nah, yeah, I just get with the totals, we're separate, that's where, yeah, I think that's what.
I tried something different by trying to show like where the department offsets were and. Didn't quite have it all.
Well, I can make a motion to approve another twenty one. Right, yep, seventy five dollars, you can combine them wherever you want to with the order article, so, yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll move in the. Second page of state reimbursements, I'll move twenty one thousand seventy five dollars. Somebody, Dan's got it, yeah. Any discussion, alright, all those in favor?
Let's move that one, alright.
So where's the Philbrook Fund offset?
Good, revenue.
Uh, our share of the um general assistance.
So the Philbrook Fund is a trust account that the board has. Acts as the trustees of.
But didn't we, wasn't there some discussion of using Philbrook Fund to um. Fund our share of the G A portion? Yes, so.
We talked about it.
I was just, and I think we voted, we voted that way too. I was just trying to figure out where that comes through, does it come through as a revenue item or is it a?
Uh, yeah, let me go back.
What you call it.
I'll go back and look at it and see how, how I got it in the form, I might not, maybe I didn't include it and I came across, but I'll highlight that when we go through the.
I don't think it was a lot of money, but it was a.
Thirty, I'll go back through it when we do the draft budget and make sure that it's. Reflected appropriately there and bring it back.
Didn't we say it was going to be designated for something very specific, Dan?
Yeah, general assistance.
On page twenty seven, the general assistance budget, you'll see, I proposed the. Certain amount would come from state reimbursement if you spend X, full amount there, and then the remaining. Balance would come from the twelve hundred and fifty would come to Philbrook Fund. So that might be. I guess is that would likely change that last line there on the revenue at forty eight seventy five not coming from. I think that might reflect a different number as it was last year. So that's a good catch. Changes it slightly.
So I think as far as. Budget purposes right now, we're, everything's good.
I think so, I just need to clean up the revenue stuff for that article there and present that in a way that. Reflect how it's in there.
Yeah, so I don't have to ask you fifteen times to repeat that number to me because I gotta confuse. So.
Essentially be a revenue from the Philbrook Fund to the.
I, Daryl, I just had one, one thing I wanted to bring up real quick on the budget. When we start doing the, I know years in past, we've had. Um, a warrant article to take. If need be for an emergency purposes for twenty five thousand. Allow the selectmen, if there's an emergency, to take twenty five thousand out of the general fund. Is that something that we? Wanna put back in in case we do run into a problem here or there or an emergency, because it was in there for quite a few years and it hasn't been the last couple. Just an observation.
Okay, yeah, I think I, instead of going back.
I had viewed it as a second contingency fund and so whether you wanna increase the other one or add it back in as a second. Another article with another contingency eventually.
Case, say we have another flood or you have a big snowstorm or whatever and. You know, you've got to incur a lot of cost and you might need to move quickly. Um, that was what that was designed for, it was more, it wasn't. You know, as a revenue source, it was in case. Comes from, from your general fund, you.
That's essentially where I would envision you would use your contingency for. But that's one there, you're not necessarily expecting to spend the eighteen thousand dollars. But it's available to you on a four million dollar budget, say, hey, there's things that we just can't fully plan for, so. That would be the question, do you want another article that it basically creates the contingency or do you wanna? Increase one or eliminate the other and just have one contingency article or have two.
I'm just looking at. Say we have the flood again, that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's why it was there and it's not like you're taking money. It's just giving the board and the town manager the authority to go into your savings and should you need it. We've only had to use it once, but. It doesn't have to happen.
Well, yeah, right, you're just saying the streamlines as opposed to, because I mean, we, you can do that with special town meeting, but as far as. If you have to quickly, but we have the eighteen thousand in there too.
We haven't had it.
I haven't had it for a few years, right?
I don't know, yeah.
But I know what Andy's saying about contingency, but it's.
I think we're saying the same thing, but I, again, when I, when I think of how we're budgeting, I mean. If you would view your contingency coming from fund balance, you're not asking the taxpayers to fund the eighteen thousand dollars, you're taking it from your fund balance. You know, how we, how I see the town using its fund balance currently, it's not like you're feeling like it's coming from. Because you're just saying, we're gonna take a hundred and fifty grand regardless of where it's being allocated to across the departments. And so it might not feel, but at the end of the day. It, you're, you're essentially asking for two contingencies is how I see it. So either increase one of them or you can certainly put them both back in and just explain that, yes, there's two in there.
But no, it is, it is, I would say the same thing, it's, we, we would just, to your point, it would be an increase in the, we put eighteen in the contingency, but. That's where that would go.
If you do have to have a special town meeting, then you have to.
Something to consider, I mean, we already made a roadblock, it might need more than twenty five.
Your general fund.
Would the board prefer I put that in on the draft? Honestly, I'm, we're building the warrant for the next meeting, so I could.
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't, this, I mean, we, we've already got the eighteen in contingency, so it's, it is. Kind of, I mean, it's something we can revisit, I mean, I get Josh's point and it's depends on what we're running into, but we do have the eighteen. Plus, you know, if we had to go to a special town meeting to appropriate something, we could do that, but as, you know, I just got a point, but I think. We're just making things clean right now, we can probably go another year. If we look at, you know, if we run into issues and we wipe out the contingency and we need it, then we'll know, we could fund it. Fund it last year, but.
Yeah, we've had storms in the past, where you're wiping out culverts and everything and you need to act quickly to get things done and. You didn't budget for it.
Um, we've got about five minutes roughly for um. Take a break, we're in a meeting, but I don't know if everybody looked through financials, we could take a few minutes, okay, I know I didn't. I mean, we won. Yeah, so we'll take a couple of minutes here and then do we, Andy?
Go to a recess? Yep, I think that's what all the commotion.
So we'll just, we won't wait. Yeah, right. So technically, yeah, all we need is a couple of minutes, because we're, we advertised the meeting at four thirty today, so we don't have to, yeah, so just give me, give me two seconds to look through the financials and then. Get them in here. Say nothing on there for me, I'm good. Forty four and it must be AP forty five, I'm guessing.
Is it forty five, I don't remember.
Yeah, this is, yeah, payroll, payroll's forty four, so it's gonna be forty five next one, yeah. It's usually the way they go, I don't know, we lost one once. That was good to get through that, so. Quickly, so. Mole would be invaded, yeah. Oh, jeez, yes, sorry, Tom, you said you hadn't seen him yet, so, yeah. I'm just gonna swig of water, then we'll get. We'll get, we'll get plugging away. I know. Blue guys everywhere, blue guys.
If we're lucky, he will.
So, sitting right up front, nice, yeah. Or we're not revisiting CLC, we've already moved that one, so we're.
We'll cut your budget down.
Contractually, we can't.
Alright. We got every, oh. You hear Cheryl in there. Becky's getting a dinner in there and Cheryl's. Alrighty. Wait, you're sharing with the rest of us or? Buy weed. Alright. So, uh, any other business we need to do tonight, anything to move on, adjourn for the evening, are we good?
No, we should not adjourn yet.
I think this is nice, and we've got a roomful here, so I believe we have maybe a, a special uh guest and uh. Ceremony here this, this, this evening?
Yeah, the next item on your agenda, uh, the chief. Um, Chief Warlick will be presenting uh a pinning ceremony for our newest officer. So with that, I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, come on, you got the floor, yeah.
You gotta make sure you're on the microphone.
Yeah, come on up, oh. I think you remain standing.
No, you, you don't have to stand, oh my goodness, he needs to stand, you stand right there. So this is something that, uh, just so everybody knows. Chief's already been sworn in officially as a law enforcement officer. But this is something that we like to do, especially when um. Somebody is kind of just starting out their career, it's pretty exciting. Uh, again, he's already been sworn in on what he can and can't do in the laws, but something that I really like to do is I really like to, to not just do the cookie cutter. Uh, it's important to me that the town knows what they're getting. Right, uh, so it's not just, you know, do you swear to uphold the constitution and we're done? It's, there's a lot of other things that I care about in our community. Not that I don't care about laws, not that I don't care about the constitution, but I care about how Mr. Wells is going to treat our community members. In order for him to succeed, he has to know what he has to do, right? So this is something that I've written up. And it's kind of special to each one of our officers, it's not specific to. It's not a blanket, it's something that I know when I hire somebody, what my expectations are and what their job's gonna be. So, now that you understand that, go ahead and raise your right hand for me, please. Officer Wells, do you swear to uphold the constitution of the United States, both state, federal laws? And while doing so, will you be professional, courteous, respectful? And mindful of others during your duties as a patrol officer for the town of Damaskota? Do you swear to develop strong relationships with citizens, staff and community? Do you swear to be the best you can be every day, both on and off duty? Will you strive to be an ambassador for our community and leave a positive impression in the minds? Of all you encounter during your duties as a police officer? Do you swear to serve the town of Damaskota every day to the best of your abilities? I swear. It is my honor to introduce Patrol Officer Matthew Wells to the Select Board, citizens and community members. Of Damaskota, there is no doubt in my mind, he will be a great and respected member within the department and the community. We look forward to mentoring him and working towards making him feel comfortable in our community and being part of a great team. His uh, his, his beautiful fiancee? Feel free to take pictures or whatever you wanna do and the family is also welcome to come up and get pictures taken if you want. This was her one and only option to, opportunity to stab him.
Wanna get over here behind the seal? There we go, chairs in there. You give a speech now?
Yeah, speech, speech, yeah.
Oh, so I was hiding back in the corner over there, who's hiding out of? Out of view over there, yeah.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, thank you. Lots of witnesses there.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, I appreciate it, and that's all we got.
I don't know, we have more, it, it's, no, the whole, the whole meeting, we've got like an hour left, you guys wanna hang out? Thank you, guys, yeah. Oh, yeah, do what you're gonna do, yeah, so save the exciting stuff for you. Oh, that's fun. That isn't fun. Awesome, all right, well. What do we have, folks? Well, let's move into. Yeah, housekeeping here, here we go, uh, minutes, right?
Don't think I included the twenty-six.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the minutes of the nineteenth in there.
I, I did, only the nineteen.
Yeah, I just did a double check. I'm pretty sure I went through them, but does anybody see anything out of the ordinary in the minutes of the nineteenth?
I didn't, but that's all right.
Nothing, okay. I'll move, uh, the minutes of February nineteenth then.
I'll second.
Okay, Josh, uh, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, and we'll table the minutes, uh, for February twenty-sixth. Uh, financials, uh, payroll warrant, uh, number forty-four.
I'll move payroll warrant forty-four.
All right, thank you, Josh. Uh, Tom seconded. Any discussion? None, all those in favor? And accounts payable forty-five?
Move accounts payable forty-five.
Thank you, Josh, I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. All right, anything come in last minute, Andy? I don't see anybody on the Zoom.
No, neither.
Citizens comments, anybody here? Lissette, you, you wanna come up? Yeah, she just pulled the door too. Yeah, I was trying to get Lissette to come on up. I bugged her earlier. I saw her in town, said, you coming to meeting tonight? And she goes, I will. Uh, all right, well, moving along, um, Andy, some highlights and.
Yeah.
Anything exciting?
Lots going on. Anything on the report there? Jump out or? More detail?
Uh, Public Works wise, I mean, they were, um, yeah, the water company was filling in that, uh. Pipe today, the one they.
That's the old, yeah, the old sewer line parking lot that was abandoned, that's been abandoned, planned. It's been filled, the district had done that today.
Yep, they were pumping that full today, so that'd be, that's good. Get to check that off underneath the. We don't want any voids underneath the parking lot.
Um, Keen Woods did get a couple, uh, at least one, if not two pipes in. Today, they'll do, they'll do a little bit more tomorrow. They're trying to get water. Through the subdivision, so it'll just kind of sit in its usual spots right now, especially with culverts, um, having either not functioned or plugged now from the work they were doing, so. They did start replacing, they did at least one, and there's another one I think they were starting. When I went up there, so that's, that's their plan, to get that drained out of there and then they'll keep going on the water line work, um. Things will always pivot and change, but you know, they're probably looking in. April, early April or so, by the time they get done with the water connections and then we'll do the road work at the end.
That's gonna be nice when that road is.
It is. Worked in our favor, I think.
I mean, the timing was. And the need was there.
Work with a, other quasi municipal organization here, it's done.
I have been trying to find out when Nobleboro's gonna pave. The other end of Back Meadow Road. Know the road commissioner was hoping it would be this year, but it sounds like it might not be this year, which I'm happy with because the water line's. Going on this spring, it'll continue again. I'd like to have a year for that to. Settle, winter for that to settle out, um, because it probably will, and then maybe we can look at doing an overlay.
Yeah.
Same time they, they come through, just have them keep pulling through and go through our town. That's one there that's ripe for an overlay. The road's not significantly failing in anywhere. It's starting to crack though, so an overlay would do it really well. If you can get that trench down and let it do its thing over the winter.
Yep, that'd be nice, yeah, I could piggyback somebody's. Job, so, yeah. So we'll keep them, build relationships with other towns and, yeah.
I'm hopeful for a schedule for the parking lot. As early as next, early next week, I think the construction team meets tomorrow. Not sure it'll come out tomorrow or Friday, but hopefully by Monday I'll have something from them as a tentative schedule, so they should be coming in. Anytime. We are still waiting for the.
I don't understand, are you having any communication with them at all?
With EVA?
Yeah.
Um, yes. It's sitting in a to be approved.
Yes.
Sitting in to be approved list.
I know that look.
Is there anyone there though at the desk or are they?
I've, I've been told it's just sitting in a pile waiting to be approved that. Our, our new contact, because our previous contact has left, um, and so. He left at the end of February, as he said he might, um, so I do have our new contact, Jeff Montgomery, I think it is, and. Talked to him a couple of times now, and so he's done what he can do and talk to the person whose desk is on basically, but it is. For whatever it's worth, it is in the to be approved, recommended to be approved file or folder. Just needs to. Get approved. And that would get us for construction through the end of May for construction and I think by September to close out the. The, the administrative aspect of it. So.
Extension, construction schedule, just a couple of little, messy little things, but, uh, yeah.
There is a media, uh, the, uh, CMP will be onsite on the thirty-first, uh, for a meeting about the new. Meter power hookup.
Yeah.
For those chargers.
For the, for the EV charger, yeah.
It's not likely that that project will be done before the parking lot's done, but everything they need to do should be in the park side. Um, the only thing we might need to potentially modify is the guardrail.
Yeah.
And it might just be a matter of just having those spaced out, so I'm gonna meet, hopefully that day I can have our engineer. Um, I mean, the construction company might be in town that day anyways, but at least have our, our PR and the engineering side there with us that day, just to. Before they place posts in the ground, that makes sure the separation on between posts is appropriate and. Trying to use the guardrail as in lieu of allards as much as we.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Put them on the other, yeah, absolutely, so.
Okay, awesome. Anything, jump out, anybody on?
Just the living facility. So that, when they say that they've drawn a, um. The link, did they get some in building permits? So when do they expect construction to start?
Uh, my understanding is they're looking to break ground this spring. Must I heard? So they've, uh, they've communicated with the water sanitary district about their impact fee, so they know what that number is, um. They have the building permit fee paid, so they're good, good to go for construction, um. It's just a matter of, I don't know if they've put it out to bid, it's not something, I don't know if we would see if it goes out to bid or not, but. My understanding is I know there's construction companies in the area that are aware that it's coming out, if it hasn't already. So there. Seems like it's a more sure thing at the moment.
Yeah. And, and I don't know why, I just have ten property tax on my mind, so. What, what, what does that mean for us? Because it's a big facility, they're talking.
Yeah, so that's in the TIF district. And so that will fund the TIF program and allow the projects that were identified in there, um, to most likely get done.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what the value at the end of the day is gonna be once it's fully built, um, nothing's gonna be there as of April first this year, so it's not gonna be captured. Um, the apartment building across the street has changed ownership, it changed ownership like April third or something. This past year, so that'll be next year, it'll reflect that change in ownership and as of now, it's a taxable entity, so that. New value, because it was, will be funded in the, for the TIF program as well.
Do we know when they're gonna break ground?
They are still waiting for funding for the new, the new portion. They still have existing portion that's there that they own, so. But they're still waiting to pull funding, affordable housing funding together to be able to proceed. They're interested, they're just struggling to find it.
Nice. Well, moving along, um. We have a liquor license renewal. Something out there, yeah, yeah, we'll go down through there. Believe there's anything. Jump now for, uh, I'll move, uh. The liquor license renewal for American Funk DBA Oyster Head Pizza.
I'll second.
Yeah, yeah, so. Josh seconded, any discussion? Those in favor? All right, so we have the, uh. Grant here.
Oh, yeah, this is a formality, um.
Housing Opportunity Grant.
The grant we applied for to look at first responder housing.
Oh, yeah.
This was, I just included a copy of the. Deliverables that we identified to, to work towards. And I, I think I just looking for your approval to sign on your behalf.
Absolutely.
That was for a hundred and I think twenty-five?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you what that, I couldn't remember what the number was.
I think it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We worked with two towns, you can go from seventy-five to one twenty-five. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, do you want a motion? Move to accept the DECD Housing Opportunity Grant Award and authorize the town manager to sign the contract on behalf of the town.
Andrew is quick on that one, yeah.
I'm excited about.
Discussion, all those in favor? All right, moving on. Andrea.
Andrea, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, the assessors. The tax assessors return.
Like, anyone's gonna move that, oh, we don't.
Nobody wants it.
Case it was any interest, I did, um. Present, they, they shared with us what the town's history in the county were for valuation, both in value and percent. Annual change or dollar change annually, and then. I had gone through on the digital version, you can see the color coding, but I was curious to see which towns were, say, the top five each year. I mean, that's what I had highlighted and then did an average increase over that period of time. And so you'll see for Damar Scotta, our average year-over-year increase from the last. Ten years has been three point two one percent year-over-year. Um, very steady relative to some of the other towns, um, the, the biggest one that's increased over that timeframe was Bristol. Their valuation has gone up almost twenty percent in that timeframe. And so when it comes to county tax assessment, when it comes to the ambulance. Assessment, that's all driven by what the state sets were worth, um, so it just shows you. Again, kind of where we sit historically over some of the other ones. Some of those towns, it doesn't mean they're.
So, all that stuff's based on valuation, not population.
Correct.
But when we reassess, will it go up?
So thi- this is what the state says we should be valuing ourselves at locally, and so there's a huge gap between the state. For, for this next tax year suggests that we, our value. That we're raising from taxation, you know, should be six hundred and four million. Currently, we're at about four hundred and twenty-four million. And so what happens is you take that as a percentage and you realize all of a sudden, if we don't do something for next tax year on our value, our local assessment. You're not gonna see the full value of your homestead. We're gonna be below that threshold that the state says you can't go below without doing a revale. Um, so I think we're like sixty-nine percent if we don't do anything right now.
I don't see how's.
We're undervaluing ourselves, basically. And there's a method, you can't just.
It's interesting how they come up with this number.
They do it based on sales ra- sales data, you know, what's actually happening in the market and they track it year over year. The, the numbers for what they show as tax year twenty-five, um, is actually using sales data, I think into twenty twenty. Three, if I got that right, so it's a little bit behind. I can't obviously use twenty twenty-four yet, that's a lot of numbers to analyze and. Have the towns report back, and then you got some towns doing calendar year, some towns like us doing fiscal year, or just. Their process lags behind a little bit in, in the, in the housing market sales. When they look at.
Is this just state, how, is this housing or it's both residential and commercial?
This is town's, town total valuation, everything.
The whole, so if you have a lot of industry, then you're, you're. Good, can be valued higher.
So Bristol, or you got a lot of shoreline with a lot of.
Depends on valuation, yeah, what it, what's. All right. Well, I guess we gotta.
Okay.
Move that, right? Yeah, I'll move the twenty twenty-five, uh, county tax assessors return. Need a number on there? I could just move it as is. Yeah, as presented. That's my motion. Who wants to second it?
I'll second.
Andrew's gonna second it.
Don't want to.
Need more discussion? Hey, all those in favor? Reluctantly, here we are. Okay, paving reserve, yeah, we've gotta get a little money moved around for the paving reserve, the theme is, I probably just gotta get finished out.
When I presented it before, I was. A little ambitious in hoping that they could cover more than the eighty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Eighty-six thousand dollars represents what GSB's share of their project is for trench paving. That's what the RITOMI's, you know. Works out to be, um, and they can provide that as an offset. They can't provide us the additional twelve thousand I was hoping for. And, you know, things on their end have just changed in terms of the cost they're expecting to do the house connections and. They've had quite the go-around with DEP to try and make sure DEP will fund the commitment they made to the project as loose as it was up front. But I think it was severely underestimated. This is kind of a bit of a pilot project for DEP. Um, in terms of making this public connection, connection to public water, which is preferred, it's just. They weren't really accounting for what happens in the field in construction and counting for ledge in particular. So all things are hoping that they don't run into the worst case scenario, but I think when, when the engineers provided a probable cost. It was to assume that they were gonna run into the same ledge. Um, challenges that they experienced when they were going around the road. And that, that might not be, which would be better for the district, um, but I think they are estimating a possibility of seven hundred grand plus to connect the houses. And indeed, and there's about, I think, sixteen re- residences out there and that, a DEP was estimated between three and five grand per. So, there's a gap. Um, so they've been struggling to work that out. I think they're at a point where they're comfortable, they're proceeding, it's not stopping it. Um, and so whoever's eligible to get connected with DEP funding, they'll, they'll be able to connect, um. So in, all of that said, the, you know, it will require the town to put an additional twelve thousand two hundred. Into the project to cover our share. It's still a fantastic opportunity in, in price for us.
Oh, it, yeah, exac- exactly, we're still, we're still good, yeah, and you want fifteen just to cover, yeah, it'll.
There, you know, there, you know, should there be something minor? I mean, it's a lump sum, but, um. Just in case, the district's still, I mean, again, highlighting that, you know, what they're also covering, it's not a monetary thing on here, is. They've got an engineer onsite already that'll oversee the, the project. From our perspective. You know, they have engineers in on that. Um, and so there's other costs that we would have to incur if we're doing this separate. Really worthwhile endeavor for us. I hate coming back to say we need more, but. It's kind of overshadowed a little bit on the other end.
It's, it's still, we're still working, we're ahead of the game on this one, so I'll, I, I'll make a motion to, um, uh, appropriate up to fifteen thousand dollars from the paving reserve. To be used towards the Keen Woods Road Improvement Project.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Josh. Any other discussion? Those in favor? Okay. All right, we're getting rid of some equipment.
We do now, we're, um. The old whacker is back in our possession. It's had its minimal fixes. There weren't other surprises that I'm aware of that were added to that. So it got a new starter, it got its engine, uh, mount, uh, fixed, uh, had a broken one of those and, um, John's cleaned it. Um, so it's as presentable as it's gonna be. We got it back because ours, our new one, had a defective, uh, joystick, essentially, um. And that is something that the company we bought it from is aware of. I think two others, I think they've sold in the last. Six months have also experienced this, and so they think it might have been a bad or faulty batch of.
Yeah.
That component.
Yeah.
Um, so they ended up stripping it out of one of the other ones they had and put it in ours. Um, and got it back to us so we can, we can use it, because I didn't, I didn't want to use the old whacker. Um, it's at a point where it's able to be sold and someone can do something different than what we're gonna be able to do with it to keep it going, but if that, if that went into a, um. Uh, regen mode. We'd run the risk of it being in limp mode when someone's trying to come and look at it for sale and, you know, it's gonna impact how that.
We talked, um. About, uh, you know, selling the equipment and stuff, especially the whacker, we're, we're gonna utilize the company that, do they have?
Central equipment had offered to list it through the machine trader, um, or I think they use, um, which gets a, a, a much wider network.
Yeah, yeah, but I know what, yeah, what their percentage was or on the sale, you know.
Follow up to ask, if, it didn't sound like he was gonna take anything, he just was willing to list it for us.
You know, sometimes they have, they have connections, they can. Get the right people connected with it, the right money, so however you do it, it doesn't matter to me, but. Um, yeah, this was that, so.
We want to sell it without the bucket.
Yep.
So we keep a spare one so we can use it for coal patch or digging into something a little harder faced and not worry about it so much. It is narrower, so that helps too in the winter time if we need to get on the sidewalk with it, um, the new bucket's a little bit wider. Um, so it, it, the nice is it's a universal skid steer attachment plate, so I mean, you, people that. Might look to buy this thing, might have those already, or they're easy to come by, um, so selling it without a bucket shouldn't really be a big deal. Um, our hope is to, you know, I, I put in this role, doing, do you want to put a minimum value on that? Um, you know, the number I was told that we might be able to get for it, you know, comes close to the first year's payment on the new one.
Right, right.
Um, that's kind of pie in the sky. Um, but I would think we would.
Yeah, I mean.
You want to put a minimum, if not, that's fine too, but, um, see what we get. Do you want to have it as a sealed bid? Do you want to have it as a, just listed for sale and take the first best offer we get?
I've listed for sale.
Listed for sale without the, without the minimum requirement. That's what I would favor.
Sometimes we do the sealed bids, I just don't know when this. Sometimes we do the sealed bids, I just don't know in this case with this machine if that's the best route.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I like the idea, yeah, getting it listed, and then I, I would be interested to see what you know, central equipment has a direct, you know, hey, I mean, you can throw it and advertise, but sometimes getting in into the right the right hands, the right people, you know, you can move it faster for the right price sometimes, so that would be, uh, but I'm fine just letting you do what you deem fat, I mean, it's, so, um I come up with a, you know, come up with a number, I mean uh, to, 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 yeah, as far as the minimum value, I mean, we know you're gonna have, we're gonna advertise it for something. I'm not gonna give it away, so, I mean, what, what do we know what it's kind of value that, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the ten's a little bit lower than what the guy thought we might get for it.
Yeah.
Um but if we're gonna put a starting point somewhere, do you want me to go higher, I mean, that was to, if we go to bid, you want a minimum bid on there? If you wanna list it for sale, I can use it in my head to know that.
Bid, we, I, it won't
Start out with fifteen, our best offer.
I'd say yes, start out with fifteen.
I mean, I'm more, if we were, if we were putting it out to closed bid, we'd have to have a minimum bid on there, but if we're selling it, you don't need the minimum.
Start out with fifteen and
Yeah, take the best offer.
Give it as far as the
Weeks and
Yeah.
All right.
As far as the one more, you, you can figure that out.
Yeah, I figured that out, exactly, so.
Yeah, do you want that, it's just a sealed, that one, that should move quick, I mean, people are gearing up, I presume, to get going for the spring mode.
Whatever you think is the best, I don't, I if we have to advertise and
Open that moves a lot faster, yeah, get them unloaded, so, okay.
So I'll, um yeah, unless you want this one.
No.
All right. So I'll just change that ten to fifteen, and, um we'll move to authorize the town manager to list and negotiate the sale of the W L thirty-two and the X three thirty through any means he deems appropriate, and to require a minimum value of if they require
No, not minimum.
Uh, no, a starting value or a, a listed value, yeah, and the, um, a listed value of fifteen thousand for the W L thirty-two. And appropriate the sales proceeds to the Highway Equipment Reserve.
Yes.
I'll second. All right, thank you, Josh, any other discussion?
Not
Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, that, all right, almost there. Boy, it's still light out.
Now can you believe it?
I was starting even six o'clock yet.
I know, it's on six. I'm home for dinner tonight, um, so charter amendments for the town warrant, there's some, just some updated.
Yeah, these are largely changes to, I mean, with the school becoming a K twelve R S U, um, it's cleaning up some stuff that's currently in the charter that reflects units that don't exist, haven't for a while.
Union seventy-four?
Union seventy-four hasn't been in existence for quite some time, um, and so it's, we have to clean this up, and now's the, now's the chance and time to do it, and so um, these largely came from drafted changes or proposals from Lindsay, um, I've shared it with Amanda. Um, she says, as long as, as long as she's confident, we're confident that what's being presented is accurately reflected in their documents, then we're fine. M M A actually said we've gone well beyond what we even need to do in the charter, because they operate under Title twenty A, and it's just it's, it's the state law, and so we've, we've taken the additional step for some reason to put it in our charter, and we, and they said, you really don't need it, if we took it out, that's a revision.
After, yeah.
Get the former charter commission, we can keep it in there, make these simple amendments, our attorney feels these are amendments, and we're not substantially changing anything over what's happening there, um. And so proposing we do that, the, the caveat here is, um, we, the charter requires a minimum number of votes um, in order to pass the amendment or revision.
Yeah.
Um, this isn't, uh, this is not a presidential election in June, you know, or anything major in there's no presidential election in November, so the chances of, of big numbers in either of those is, is like, is low. Um, but I think if we can get it on for June as long as there's no stipulation that we have to wait and can't try it again in November, we can make a stronger push in November if we don't get the count we need, I think we need to have three hundred and sixty or eighty people to vote on it. Um, in, in these off-years that's pretty hard to come by in June, so we're gonna have to do, do a lot to encourage people to come and vote. Um, I think they said two fifty to three hundred is usually a normal
Election, yeah.
Count, okay.
Oh, fourth of trial.
And the only question, just a clarification, the last highlighted paragraph on B is as of July first, twenty twenty-five, primary and secondary education is part of Union seventy-four. I didn't see that in the notations on the right where that was changed or deleted or anything, so I'm assuming that
R S U, it should be R S U, right?
Right. Yeah, that's just, that's the only thing I saw, I said, I think that was, yeah, supposed to be, we gotta get rid of that Union seventy-four in there.
Yeah, that whole thing needs, I need to change that whole thing, cause it still talks about the other
It still gives the other schools and stuff in there, yeah. Yeah. So we just need, uh, uh, yeah, I need to update that last paragraph.
Okay.
Or get rid of that, right?
Yeah. Um, I think the biggest thing is whether you wanna add this to the warrant in general. And then the next meeting will have, will be a draft warrant proposed, so I can clean up that language for the next meeting.
So the worst thing that happens is that there's not enough votes, and then you have to put it on another
Yeah.
Little
And we, and we keep, we keep Union seventy-four in place and
Yeah, right, it's still, yeah. It's fine.
But otherwise, the town
Don't exist.
The voters have already gone through the process that it needs to deform this, you know, it was approved by the state, and so this is just an extra piece that's been created years ago.
It's for, mostly for us. Yeah. Only in our town.
Let's clean it up, the, yeah, make sure the ordinance, you know, the charter and stuff makes sense.
Yeah.
So, okay. So do, um, yeah, so you need to change that, yeah, that last one needs to be
I'll make those changes and present it in the next meeting for the draft warrant article, but just confirming that you're comfortable putting it on for June.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so they, just they had not for today then, so we won't we won't